Is there a John's wife bigger or not?
No.
Well, I mean, in the city council agenda it's got...
Says Mrs.
It says on there, it's a John's.
Oh, I love that.
Okay, we're all, we need to check the mics.
What's that? Test one, two, three. One, two, three. Test.
I'm making somebody happy.
Test one, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray. Fathers, we come before this group tonight, Lord, we just pray, God, that you will preside over this meeting, that you will give us guidance and wisdom as we set about to do the business for the city of Jackson. We pray, Lord, that you would bless our city, that you would bless those that are working hard to continue to make this a great place to live. We just ask you to give them wisdom and guidance as well, which in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I would like to call this meeting of the Jackson City Council to order. Welcome everyone who is with us this evening. We'll start with roll call.
Foster.
Here.
Andera.
Here.
Colby.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Newkirk.
Here.
Crabtree.
Here.
Speaking to Mayor Evans earlier, I don't think he had any recognition he wanted to bring for those, so I didn't know if...
Not tonight, sir.
All right. So we'll move into Mr. Antler. I think he's signed to speak this evening for us here, I'm sure, so we give you three minutes there and...
All right. Well, I'm sure everybody's tired of seeing me. And I'm tired of coming down to that meeting and we talk a little and then just move on and nothing seems to be happening. We filed a petition, Mr. Peters is on, wasn't even brought it up. It wasn't answered. The street's still the same way it was. Mr. Swackhammer says wants to do a street study on it if a county or committee agreed on it. That still not going to change anything, have anything to do with the one-way street. Two or three people decided to make that a one-way street. Taking the light out just makes it even easier. You can't do a study on traffic's not flowing. Professionals just can't do a study if there's no cars going through there, only one way, people just can't, you can't do a study on it. So other than saying it's legal to take out the light, it's a waste of taxpayer money. And I'm just about done with the whole deal. It's not going away. You know, you can do whatever you want with it. Maybe a mayor can put it on Facebook with somebody's birthday, just let me know what's going on and then we'll go from there with it. If I have to go outside the city and get help, then that's what we'll do. That's just how I feel about it. My neighbors, they all signed a petition, but they don't want to come down here and speak. So I'm on my... But there is help outside the city, so... It's a shame that two or three people decides what happens in the city to people. That's just how I feel about it. It continues their meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Antler.
Hey, do you mind saying which two or three people you think made that decision?
Well, I was told you suggested making that a one-way street.
Well, there's one thing that's wrong, what else? Who's the two or three people that made the decision?
Who's the group saying that, who's the group saying that they want the light taken out?
You didn't ask my question.
Well...
Who's the two or three people you say made the decision? I just want to know, so I know, so that I know who made the decision.
I always spoke to you and you said you wasn't, so you're out of it. But I know Mr. Swackhammer was involved in it and stuff, but if he had have thrown three stop signs up there to replace the light, done a street study, then it would have been legit.
Well, just so you know.
Okay.
The decision was made by a lot more than two or three people.
Okay.
The city administration was involved. The two or three department heads that are involved in that, our street and alley superintendent, our electric superintendent, the police chief and his staff were all involved in that. So just so you know, it wasn't a decision made haphazardly by two or three people. There was a lot of thought went into it and we think that we have done what's best and we are still waiting to decide whether we're going to do a traffic study or not. It's expensive, but we are considering it. We have discussed it with council and I just wanted you to know the facts because...
Well, I appreciate you.
So often, that's not the case.
But there are many lights, I mean, this is an old town. There's a lot of intersections messed up. We've got a five-way stop up here. How many towns has got that? There's a lot of different traffic lights in here, it's not necessary, I agree with that, but you had to change the street to do this.
Well, we didn't change the street. We changed, we changed some traffic control and, you know...
You changed the flow.
We, we do as we always do and always will continue to do what we think's best for Jackson and for the masses of Jackson and not for a couple of people in Jackson, frankly. So you're welcome to come here every meeting, you said you're getting tired of it. We did see, or at least saw your petition, we take that into consideration. I just didn't want you to think that none of us are doing our job because we all are.
No, I appreciate you speaking up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
Anything else? Next, we'll move into the approval of the minutes. They're contained in your packet. Any objections or corrections as presented to council? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them. Ms. Colby, motion. Second, Mr. Newkirk. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Next, we will go into committee reports. We'll begin with Mr. Andera.
No report.
Thank you. Budget and finance, Ms. Colby?
No report.
Thank you. Police, fire and traffic, Mr. Foster.
Yes, I briefly talked to the service director today and I've got a proposal in front of me on the traffic study. And myself, I think it'd be a good idea to do a traffic study. Probably hasn't been one for maybe close to 20 years. It's a little expensive, but nothing out of the ballpark. You want to take it further there, Mr. Swackhammer?
Well, me will, I will. I will, since you got me on the roll here. The, I agree with, with David and I, I also talked about this a couple of times and we do think it's probably, probably is, does justify a traffic study. And you may have the estimates, I don't remember what they were, but even at that intersection which is in question, you go right on down that and there's a couple of other lights that I've heard some of you say probably don't need to be there on out State Street or... And then there are a couple of other lights that we could include in this study, Pearl Street or Portsmouth Street that probably no longer are needed or warranted. So we would like to study the whole group of maybe, I think the bid was up to 10.
10.
Intersections we can have studied and, for example, the one at the intersection of Bridge and State could be affected by what happens at High and State or even down at Carroll Avenue and State. So we'd like to tie all of them into one study. If council sees fit, we'll appropriate the money. Now, David, you can add to that if you'd like.
Yeah, I think the next thing to do is determine all the possible intersections we want and then go back to this agency and see what the best deal we can get for the number of. And that would be the next step, I think, with the traffic committee is identifying the intersections throughout the town that they would like to and prioritizing them before we went out and got a number and see what we can do. I never like for just whatever number they throw out, you know, going without, going back to them and see if we can get a reduction.
Right now, it's 17.5 and service director feels that probably can get them down. That's for 10 intersections.
Well, 17.5 plus, plus an additional per...
Thousand dollars per intersection.
Yeah, so...
So if he wants to see...
Yeah. That's why I'd like to have the intersections actually identified before we pull them in to talk to them. Because like we've talked about, if we do something on Broadway or Portsmouth, you got three lights that are all within line of sight of each other down each street. And is that one intersection, is that three intersections? Can you do one traffic study that covers more than one intersection? That's why I want to identify all the intersections that we'd like to have a study done on first.
Anything else, Mr. Foster?
No.
Any questions, Mr. Foster or Mr. Swackhammer?
I have a question relating, but I'll wait until the service director's report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Foster. Service, Mr. Peters?
No report.
Thank you. Next, we'll go then to the auditor's report, Mr. Reed.
Yes, I've got a few things I'd like to cover. Little update on our office, things are smoothing out. Still a huge learning curve. As most people know, the two people that were in the office the longest are no longer there. So we're kind of rebuilding some things, changing some things around, updating some things. I think it's going to be a learning curve for this whole year until you go through the whole cycle. But after that, I'm looking for things to really improve and as far as information and making it available to people, I think it'll all be electronic and we'll be able to push a few buttons and get most of the information out to people in a very, very timely manner and the way they like it. So that is a little bit of a slow thing right now, but it's something that I believe is going to change here in this, this year, this coming year. The other thing I'd like to cover a little bit is, to me, a very positive thing. Last year, the city of Jackson was able to pass an income tax. Everybody got on board with it for once, everybody was working together. And in a 14-month time period, the city netted $3.1 million, which is a huge sum. And that was being used for the police, which will help the city out, and also the infrastructure of the city. So people have been working together on that and the thing that I had pushed even from years ago that I would like to point out and it's, we won't have a complete study on this for another few months, but what it is, from 15, 10 to 20 percent, roughly around 15 is where we think it'll fall, that is the only percentage that the citizens of Jackson are paying. The rest of that money is from outside of Jackson. So as far as the benefit to the citizens of Jackson, you've got a match there of 85 percent. They're paying 85, you're paying 15. And so that is a great thing to me as far as for the benefit of the city. And I think everybody can look back on this and say, this was a great, great undertaking. It's going to be a great improvement for the city and the mayor and the service director and council are over those funds and how they're spent. And going forward, I believe that will be a very positive thing. You will see the improvements in the streets, in the sidewalks, in the downtown area that the citizens deserve. And I think this is a very, very positive thing. And I'd like to thank people for working together and looking forward to the next couple of years because I think it will bring in, there's some things down the road here, but I think it'll bring in somewhere around 2.8 a year as far as income for the city. 2.8 million that is. So thank you, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any questions for Mr. Reed? Next, Mr. Kirby.
No report.
Thank you. Mr. Hinch.
Just a few things to follow up with what Mr. Reed said. I kind of feel like it's my job to make sure the citizens, not just the 15 percent that are in-town residents contributing, but the other 85 percent that are obviously have some affiliation with Jackson, that's why the money comes here. Feel safe, feel like it's a community that they can take their kids out in safely and enjoy life. So I'm making sure that they get the best that we can provide and this council and administration have been very supportive of our operations. To update, I did put a March statistic in, I think everybody's packet. I know it's kind of just a boring statistic, but that's kind of a way that we've been trying to keep in check and saying, they're still doing things. It's hard to tell just by outward observation of the police department whether things are actually getting done or not, I'm sure they are. Mr. Wilson helped make sure something that we had done the other day was in the paper, I think most people have seen that. We're always dealing with, I had an officer last night in the middle of the night that stopped somebody that got three-plus ounces of fentanyl and she had a friend with her, they were in-town to sell from outside of town, they had come to town to sell. We were able to get the three-plus grams of fentanyl off the street, seized her scales. She had a person with her who had a loaded 9mm firearm in the vehicle, I think. My, I'm not directly involved with the investigation, but I think it was the protection for that, we were able to seize that and we're still doing an investigation on that. So just to know that these things are constant and continuous. But this month, I am sending two sergeants of mine to CIT training. This is a big training month for us. Apparently, everybody wanted to have trainings in April. The CIT training is Crisis Intervention Team. It's, it's very common for law enforcement to have it. It helps educate on all the resources available when we deal with people with mental health crisis. And there's a lot of drug-induced mental health crisis that we deal with, we deal with a combination of some mental health problems and some drug addiction. in combination of some mental health problems and some drug addiction. And that, that compounds the problem, makes it a little bit more dangerous. And this gives everybody just some up-to-date training on those issues. So, I've got two guys going to that. I have three patrolmen going to a basic SWAT school. That way, when we do some of these special operations that are a little higher risk, that they've had some basic training and, of some basic SWAT operations. And I have, today was the first day for one of my newer officers to do K-9 training. He's going to be in release of K-9 training. That way, we'll have use of a drug K-9. And it should be a pretty friendly pup, this one that we're getting. It's not a seek-out-and-destroy, kind of chase-down-and-bite-people-dog. It, it'll sniff drugs, it'll help find articles, maybe something thrown in a field. So, we're really proud that that's going. And also, are mandated by the state, every, every police officer in the state of Ohio is mandated to take 24 hours of continuing professional training. And so, I'm, most of this is done online. We did apply for a grant, I don't remember whether it was late last year or just after this year flipped over. We did receive that, it was around $2,800, I believe, somewhere in that vicinity. It does really compensate for all the costs, but it was something that the state had. We did apply for it. It is money that comes back in to help reimburse with some of the costs associated. Most of the training is done online. I'm in the middle of doing mine right now. And so, there's a lot more time spent in the office this month, probably, by most of the officers, trying to knock out this 24 hours of time and get some of these certifications that keeps us up-to-date and able to operate. Some of this training is very good and relevant for modern issues in the police world. So, that's kind of what we're doing this month. We're doing a lot of training to stay up-to-date so that I can continue to provide you a staff that's well-educated and up-to-date on their training and continue to provide the city good services. So, I just wanted to make sure that that's out there. Of course, I'm always up for questions, anytime, day or night. So, I just want to make sure everybody's informed.
Thank you, Chief Hinch. Anyone having questions for Chief Hinch? Thank you. Next, Mayor Evans. Mayor's report.
First, I want to thank Marva for all these Easter cookies that apparently everybody got. When I walked in, I thought they were birthday cookies because today is Swackhammer's birthday. You see, you might, I don't know where that came from, but tomorrow, folks, is President Dan Foltz's birthday.
April's a great month and Mr. Swackhammer.
And, and last week, and last week was Auditor Brett Reed's birthday, so there's a lot of birthday going on here this week. So, happy birthday, everybody. We're not going to sing though. These are Easter cookies. Easter is Sunday, Good Friday. This Friday is a holiday in the city of Jackson, just making sure everyone's aware of that. And that Friday's trash pickup this week will be held off until Monday. So, Monday, they'll be running this Friday's route and next Monday's route. So, we decided to do it afterwards and rather than, instead of doing it early, because nobody seems to get the memo when we do it early. And it's sitting out there on Friday and then it'll be sitting out there all weekend and it, it, it may be anyway, but we're going to pick it up on Monday, not Friday. To piggyback on what Auditor Reed was saying, one of my favorite things I, I remember that we said, that I liked to say when we were campaigning for this income tax, well, two things. First of all, I said, this thing don't have a chance unless we all support it. And I know some of you, some of the seats are different now, but we all supported it and that's why the city has it. The other thing I remember saying that, that I like to remember back on, I, I said that this income tax will change Jackson and it truly is. And like Mr. Reed said and, and like the chief said, you know, we're, we're making, we're making a lot of positive improvements in Jackson. And, and that income tax is, is a big part of it. You, you can't do things without money. And we're, we're, we're going to, we're going to do great things with that money. We're going to continue to be responsible, fiscally responsible with it and try to, try to evaluate and determine priorities as far as where, where the highest priorities are because there's still won't, there's still not enough. But it is going to change Jackson. I had one a little bit more about the, the traffic study. Complete what I started to say there. Also, Mr. Swackhammer had reached out to the county to get their input because that's a county road, it goes out to Beaver Pike. He also had reached out to the state of Ohio, ODOT, to get their information and direction on that. So, I just want council to know that, you know, there wasn't a haphazard decision on what we do at that intersection. Council can tell us tonight if they like and we'll get that study, you know, organized. It, it's, it's really frustrating to me as it is, the gentleman that was here tonight, of how things, how slowly things move in municipality. But if, if that's council's wishes and as it is administrations, we'll get moving on it as quickly as possible to determine what's the right thing to do at that intersection as well as many other intersections in the city. Also, a point of interest, I've been told that the, the Trout Festival is this Saturday, the 16th, out at Lake Hammer Town. So, I, I hope that's good, is that good information, Mr. Newkirk? Surely you know about that.
Oh, yeah.
It's this Saturday. Do you know the hours or whatever? I don't know. No, anyway, Trout Festival out at Lake Hammer Town this Saturday. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Questions? Anyone have for Mayor? Mr. Ondera?
I don't know if this is appropriate time, but do we have a timeline on this traffic study? How long this will take or what a end time, you know, council says tonight they want to?
They've got an outline in the documents I gave Brett there so that he could take a look at it. I don't know when they can begin, but they've got their timeline for the recordings and validations. So, we would, you know, like I said earlier, first thing we'd need to know is our full scope before we go back and try to
Right.
Barter with them on the.
Yeah, I just wondered if they had the information, how long that would take to move along. I don't know, maybe this is better left for new business.
I think that's, I think that's our best spot for it in new business. I have it penciled in here for just a little bit of time in discussion.
Sure.
Anyone else for Mayor Evans? Did not? The birthday gentleman, Mr. Swackhammer.
First thing, I don't know how many saw on the city's websites and a few others, there was a boiler alert to win out today for the Burlington Road and the high school area. This was due to a power pole that we were changing out over by the plastic plant. It caused a short in the lift station generator down below the high school. So, that's the reason. It's now since been fixed. We had to take new samples. We expect that boiler alert to be lifted either later tonight or tomorrow morning, depending on when we get the results back from the sample. A couple of other items, I, I saw it on the high schools' websites, but I do want to mention that we have a couple of our Jackson County students that were recipients of AMP scholarships. Currently, AMP is planning on being here, a representative from AMP during our July 11th meeting to present those awards to those two individuals. They have both been contacted and that's the best date that all parties seem to have available. So, just wanted to, in case there was any questions on those, those will be coming up as well. Back in April, about a year ago actually, April the 12th of 21, there was a house numbering ordinance that was passed by council. And we are still running continuously into a lot of homes where you cannot see or do not find a house number situation. And we're going to have to elevate our course to continue moving that. I know Chief Channel has brought it up to me a couple of times, the lack of being able to identify a, an address. And I'm sure if I would have asked Chief Hinch, he would say that that's probably an issue for his officers as well. So, Pete, if you can help me also, just get it out there that we, this was codified ordinance 521.11 or ordinance 2721 passed a year ago, just asking for the homeowners and the business owners to have their addresses. That would be a big help. And Pete, I've got a copy of that for you if you would like it afterwards as well. I'll leave it up here then. See what else we have. Tree Commission, we do have a, our next meeting is 5:00 PM prior to the next council meeting. If anybody wishes to participate in that one. That's all I have.
Is it 5:00 o'clock then on the 25th?
25th.
Mr. Swackhammer, I do have a question. In the numbering aspect of what you're trying to do, is this something that Ray Lewis, would that fall under his jurisdiction of possibly doing some streets and contacts or how, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, it definitely could fall under that. I, I guess I'm probably going to talk to Chief Channel and Chief Hinch to see also if they can help us when they're doing their normal stuff and they run across to where it's become a hindrance in them doing their duties as well. If those, we can address those as they occur. Right now, that's a, a big enough issue across the spectrum that Mr. Lewis will be going door-to-door almost. So, we really do need to ask for the citizens of Jackson to, to help us out in getting their addresses in place for us.
Any questions for the service director? Thank you, Mr. Swackhammer. Next, we'll move into the ordinance and resolutions before council this evening. We will begin first reading on ordinance 1222.
An ordinance amending zoning regulation text in Chapter 2 of the City of Jackson zoning regulations for additional conditional uses in areas zoned as B1, B2, B3, and I.
Like to entertain a motion to adopt resolution 1222 as presented to council this evening?
Move to adopt.
Mr. Peters, first, is there a second? Mr. Ondera, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion is carried. We will have discussion and we'll begin with Mayor.
I mentioned this at the last meeting, this is just a result of the planning commission meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago to allow some flexibility into our zoning book where there, where none exists. I had mentioned about the house on Main Street that used to be a residence and then became a, a business and now they want it to go back to a residence. And according to our planning commission book, there's no way to do that short of rezoning it. This would give us a couple of other ways to deal with issues where properties aren't zoned the way they're being used and how to bring that in compliance. Basically, that's it unless, John, you're on the planning commission?
Right. Zoning Board of Appeals.
Ryan Peters is on the planning commission unless he'd like to add something to that.
Just from the discussion that we had in the meeting, there was no remedy to fix it rather than redraw the map, which doesn't seem like a good idea for one property. So, I guess our thought process behind it was allow for an appeal to the board for the conditional use or variance that's built into the other zoning districts. There was no, there was no, there was no appeal process on some of these. So, it's basically just making each zoning class have the same means for appeal or for conditional use or variance. So, there's not really, not like we're changing anything. It's just allowing the property owner to file an appeal for a change of use, basically. So, I don't think it's earth-shattering or groundbreaking or anything. It's just, just a detail to kind of help solve some of these problems.
Mr. Swackhammer?
Yeah, and in the last week, there's actually been three other businesses that have approached us that would have had to go through a rezoning process if something like this is not available as well. So, I know of at least three other entities that are very much looking forward to seeing the, the path that this particular ordinance takes.
Other discussion? Any further action to be taken on resolution 1222? Hearing none, this constitutes the first reading of resolution, oh, I'm sorry, ordinance 1222. Next, we have ordinance 1322, first reading, Ms. Kuhn?
An ordinance creating fund number 412, Mill Street Water Project Fund and declaring an emergency.
Could I get a motion to adopt ordinance 1322 as presented to council? Ms. Colby? Is there a second? Mr. Newkirk? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion is carried. Discussion? Mr. Swackhammer?
Aye, yes. Back last fall, when we were trying to get the sewer funding for the, what we're calling the Mill Street Project, but it's Ohio Putt, no matter others over there, we were hoping to do some water improvements at that time as well. Later, we found out that we didn't have the funding to support that at, at that time. And now, it's come back around for some funding is going to be available to us to support the improvement so that we can replace two-inch lines with four-inch lines. That'll give us fire suppression in that area where there is none right now as well as additional water pressure in that area. So, this is to set up the account to receive the funds that we will be getting in for this project. And I would like to ask council to consider using the emergency calls so we can go ahead and have a, an account in place when the funds become available.
Other discussion?
I move to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend, seconded by Mr. Ondera. Ms. Kuhn?
Foster?
Yes.
Ondera?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Further discussion? Ms. Kuhn?
Foster?
Yes.
Ondera?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Ordnance 1322 is duly adopted. Next, we will consider ordinance 1422, first reading, Ms. Kuhn?
An ordinance approving additional appropriations from the Foundation for Appalachian Ohio to the Skate Park Project Fund and declaring an emergency.
Could I get a motion to adopt ordinance 1422 as presented to council? Mr. Bob, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Colby? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion is carried. Discussion? Mr. Swackhammer?
This is just a grant we'd received previously to make some improvements at, at the Manpower Park, I'm sorry, at the Hillcrest Skate Park by adding some more equipment there. And this is just appropriating that money, that grant, so we can get this out to, get this project underway. I, I too, on this one too, I'd like to ask council to consider passing it on first reading.
Other discussion?
I move to suspend the rules.
Motion by Mr. Ondera to suspend rule, is there a second? Mr. Newkirk? Ms. Kuhn?
Foster? Ondera?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Any more discussion? Ms. Kuhn?
Foster? Ondera?
Yes.
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Ordnance 1422 is duly adopted. Next, we'll move on to the resolution. Next, we'll move on to the resolution and consider resolution, uh, twelve-twenty-two. Ms. Kuhn?
A resolution of the legislative authority of the City of Jackson, Ohio to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into an agreement with American Electric Power Service Corporation and declaring an emergency.
Can I get a motion to adopt resolution twelve-twenty-two as presented to council this evening?
So move.
Mr. Peters, is there a second? Mr. Crabtree? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Discussion. Mr. Swackhammer?
Uh, yes, this is not a new project. This project has went through, uh, multiple phases with AEP. Uh, as stated, this is for the Veteran Drive Substation. Uh, this is to upgrade and continue to build the redundancy for the city. Uh, we've done the preliminary work with AEP and this, uh, of ours has just to enter into the final agreement to complete that project. Uh, council has funded the, uh, work up to this point. This is the final, uh, designs, installing, and owning and operating that one-thirty-eight KV.
Further discussion?
Mr. President, uh, what, what's the timeline on, on this phase?
Uh, you, you would not have to pass it tonight, uh, before, uh, you know, you'd have time to move forward with it. The city's already in, invested hundred thousand plus in the design work. Um, I assume we're going to move forward with it. It's all about building out the infrastructure and the redundancy of our electric. It's, you know, there's no... Go ahead.
Uh, just, I, I want to make clear here, this project is also already budgeted in the approved budget for it this year too.
That, that's kind of a thought process. Like, we've already, we've already made it all the way through the planning process. I mean, if no one has an issue, you should just go ahead. I, I move to suspend the rule so we can finally complete this project.
Second by Mr. Ondera? Discussion. Ms. Kuhn?
Foster?
Yes.
Ondera?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion? Ms. Kuhn?
Foster?
Yes.
Ondera?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Uh, resolution, uh, twelve-twenty-two is duly adopted. Next for coun- council consideration tonight is resolution thirteen-twenty-two. Ms. Kuhn?
Resolution authorizing the mayor or his designated to enter into an agreement with SNS Engineers Incorporated to complete the engineering services for the Mill Street Water Project and declaring an emergency.
Could I get a, uh, motion to adopt resolution thirteen-twenty-two as presented to council? Mr. Newkirk? Second by Ms. Colby. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion is carried. Other discussion? Mr. Swackhammer?
Um, I'm not Mr. Swackhammer, but I'll speak for the birthday boy here for a minute. This, uh, the, uh, project he talked about earlier, the, our proposed Mill Street waterline improvements that we just set the fund up for, this is to allow us to go ahead and hire for the pre-engineering work for that project.
Other discussion?
Where are they from?
Um, they are actually from Huntington?
Yeah, when we first...
The engineering company?
When we first started working with them, they had an office out of Athens. It's currently vacant. The person they had there has left, but they probably will refill that. But it's out of the Huntington and Charleston area, and they will have, uh, people up here on site for... They're actually the ones that came in and did us the sewer project for this same area. Uh, so they're very familiar with it, and we didn't have to go back out and redo a lot of work. They already had done all the, uh, surveying and stuff for the area. All the preliminary work was already set up for the engineers estimate for help us with this funding.
Mr. Mayor, have you worked with them before?
Uh, we have been working with them on the Mill Street Sewer Project. No, no, this was a new firm that the city started working with, um, two years ago when we, we took out a request for qualifications.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, yeah.
Okay.
It, uh, and I would, I would ask for council to consider passing this on first reading too, so we can move forward with that. It's just hiring the, the engineering company that, it's the same one that is doing the sewer project. We thought it would be smart, wise to use them in the water project of the same neighborhood.
And, and if I can expand on that, we would like to try to get them both out the bid at the same time. So when we tear up the neighborhood for the sewer, we're doing the water too. So getting those two bids out as close to possible would, would be the ideal thing.
Other discussion? Mr. Ondera?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Or Mr. Ondera, is there a second? Mr. Newkirk? All those, oh, no, I'm sorry, I don't... Roll call. I'm sorry.
Foster?
Yes.
Ondera?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion? Ms. Kuhn?
Foster?
Yes.
Ondera?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Uh, resolution thirteen-twenty-two is duly adopted. Finally, this evening, the resolution fourteen-twenty-two will be presented to council. Ms. Kuhn?
Resolution authorizing an agreement with DLZ Ohio Incorporated to provide architectural, engineering, project inspection, and other services for the water and wastewater mainline project and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to accept or adopt resolution fourteen-twenty-two as presented to council? Mr. Peters, is there a second? Mr. Ondera? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Discussion. Mr. Swackhammer?
Yeah, I'll take this one. Uh, I'm glad to say and report, uh, we've talked several times about the EDA, uh, funding grant that we went after. Uh, this is one of the final pieces that we have been asked to provide a signed copy with a architectural firm for this. This is the, uh, South Street Waterline Replacement Project, including laterals, as well as the primary sewer lining project over in the Harding, Athens, street areas, that main trunk line through there. Uh, we have done very well getting through multiple steps in the EDA grant process. We have two pieces of, uh, legislation to get to them, or documentation, one piece of legislation that, and that is a signed contract with an engineer for the final project. And that's what this is for.
Further discussion?
Uh, this is for a two-point-one million dollar EDA grant. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm thinking it's more than that.
I think the whole project's close to two-point-eight.
Yeah, it's...
But I think the grant's like two-point-one.
Again, where is this DLZ? They're from Ohio. Where?
Yeah, uh, DLZ was the old Stan Tech.
In Logan.
In Logan, uh, before they were bought out by, uh, the, or that, that office was bought out by the Cincinnati firm of DLZ. Uh, DLZ is a firm that we have worked with, uh, quite a bit here recently. We're about to go to bid on that Mitchell to Wood project. They're the ones that did the engineering work on it. Uh, they also have another project that they're doing engineering work on it for us, uh, that they've helped find funding for as well.
Other discussion?
Is this something we need to get done?
I would sure like to be able to send off to the, the committee, uh, that's looking at these grants, something in the next day or so, sign, with a signed agreement, but I would need this signed first.
Any further action to be taken? Resolution fourteen-twenty-two?
I make motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Mr. Ondera, is there a second? Mr. Peters? Ms. Kuhn?
Foster?
Yes.
Ondera?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion? Ms. Kuhn?
Foster?
Yes.
Ondera?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Resolution fourteen-twenty-two is duly adopted. That concludes our ordinances and resolutions for the evening. Looking at correspondence, Ms. Kuhn?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to remind you again about the, um, Ohio Ethics Commission filing reminder. All of you are required to allow a financial disclosure. I've put the information in your packets and talked to you about several times, but the, um, final date is May sixteenth. Just want to make sure that you have that done, so you don't get fined.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Kuhn. Any other correspondence to be brought before council? Next, we'll have old business. Uh, is there any old business to be brought before council?
I'd just like to make a quick comment. I know we passed a lot of these ordinances and resolutions by emergency tonight, but just so the public knows that these are ongoing projects that have finally made it to the point where they, the money needs to, to be, uh, transferred to, to pay for them. So, uh, I know it sounds like we're just running through everything, but there's a lot of work that went into that, and we're, we're at the, the, the fruit part, so just wanted to let the public know that.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Any other old business to be brought before council? Uh, hearing none, then we'll move into new business. I think there's a couple of things, uh, for discussion. Uh, let's, let's start with the traffic study. Uh, the Mr. Ondera, um, and Mr. Foster, Mr. Swackhammer, and Mayor Evans have discussed. So, uh, Mr. Swackhammer, so are, are you looking for a motion by council to, uh, give you some direction? Uh, what is it you would like council to provide for you, uh, with this traffic study, all right?
I think we're, it's two-fold really. Uh, one is identify the intersections that, uh, need to be taken into consideration for this study, and then the approval to move forward, uh, with trying to negotiate the best deal possible for the study.
I would like to see a committee meeting so we could at least have an idea of what target intersections we're, we're talking about. That way we can at least get public's input, uh, two weeks before our next meeting, so...
Six o'clock, like there.
Let's do it.
I'll be all right. Six o'clock, and we'll call a count, uh, committee meeting of the, um, police firing traffic. Six o'clock, uh, there on the twenty-fifth, hearing chambers.
And then, that would, I mean, I, I guess our committee can recommend to ourselves what, what we need to do. So be able to take action that night.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Pete?
Uh, Mr. Hinch, or Chief Hinch, I'm sorry, excuse me. Um, you deal with traffic every day. What has been, have you seen any problems over there since it's been changed, or?
That's, you know, that's a part of what, what I think, uh, Mr. Swackhammer and I have discussed is, you know, do we jump headfirst into this, or do we wait and see what's the result of the change right now? Obviously, that puts some things at risk. We've monitored, I've personally gone over and monitored it on three occasions. Is it increasing speed coming down State Street? Is it increasing? There are some significant advantages that we've seen thus far, uh, Pearl Street, when, when people head, I guess it's northwest on Pearl Street, uh, coming from here and going towards Giovanni's, that stop sign. When there was the light there, it was very difficult to pull out and turn left onto Bridge Street to continue to go out to State Street. That has freed up. It's also surprisingly freed up a little bit down at Water Street and Bridge Street. It's helped with just not having this big flow of traffic both directions controlled by lights, that it does create openings at times. And so we haven't seen any negative impact. We haven't seen any crashes thus far. I know Mr., and, and, and I'm, I truly understand Mr. Adler's disappointment in, A, the speed of, uh, a resolution and how it may impact him personally. I haven't seen anything negative thus far. Um, it's funny, what, what, you know, we talk about, if you don't have a light, is that going to create more speed? And of course, speed is a major contributor to a lot of crashes. But if people know they have to stop, or people aren't trying to beat a light, that's when, that's when I've noticed in my twenty years' experience working traffic in this city, that's when people speed, that's when those crashes occur, is when you come up the hill on High Street, um, from the ball fields headed towards State Street, and you see the lights green, boy, people really step on it. That's right about where I live. So I notice that more than just when I work. That's when they're stepping on it and trying to make sure that they get there while that green light happens. If people know that they have to make a stop regardless, they tend to just slow down a little bit because they know they're going to have to stop whether they, you know, no matter what they, what they do. Um, so there are several intersections on, and we've discussed it lightly, but there are several intersections that, uh, I'm eager to maybe have changed. Makes it easier for us to investigate crashes should they occur in their instances, like, if, if you guys think from your personal experience, one of the intersections I know, Broad and Broadway. Have you ever sat behind six people at Broad and Broadway? I mean, uh, I never have in my twenty-plus years living in this town. It may be something the four-way stop just helps flood, but the traffic study is important because it's cause and effect. Sometimes when something gets freed up, like, let's say you took the, the, the light out at where the old Co Auto Sales was right there by the spot on Main, the old radio building. You take that out and just make that a two-way stop sign, you go and you go... Does that affect people all the way down to Pizza Hut? Sometimes it can with the flow and everything happens every set. And that's why it's one of those things that, you know, bring in the experts and let them really figure that out. But yeah, a- as far as that intersection, I know I went probably on an irrelevant tangent there, but, um, that, that intersection thus far, zero crashes, zero impacts, negatives thus far.
Any other comments? Okay, so that'll, that will be committee meeting, six o'clock. Uh, tree commission at five that evening, and then, uh, our committee, or the committee meeting at six. Um, the second thing to, for consideration, it was in your packet, uh, was from, uh, GeoPro Consultants. And Mr. Swackhammer, uh, you would expound on this just a little bit for us?
Uh, yes. Couple of months ago, I had, uh, asked council, uh, to consider the idea of updating the city's, uh, ordinances, minutes, and resolutions into an electronic format, similar to what we are about to complete for the cemetery records. Uh, and, uh, and council was, uh, asked us to go ahead and get some estimates on that. That is the estimate for those books. Uh, that's all the books that we could find, uh, for both minutes, as well as ordinances and resolutions.
Yes, Mr. Peters?
Are those, are those books secure? Like, meaning are they in a fire, like, so we're, we gotta do this, like? Because I mean, if you probably priced out what a, a fireproof file cabinet big enough to hold all those, we're probably exceeding this amount.
Yeah, and I think, uh, the, we agree that we're finding, continuing to find these in many different locations throughout the city, from in these file cabinets to up on the stage, to in the memorial building, and we still have holes in years that haven't been located. So it's important that we, uh, we make a long-term plan. Some of these are getting, getting very dilapidated, as you can imagine. They're starting to deteriorate. And if we're going to preserve Jackson's history and the ordinances, resolutions, and minutes, we need to get them into an electronic format.
Yes.
Um, once what we have is converted, how hard is it to stay on top? I mean, do we have the equipment to, are we able to update ourselves after this task is complete here?
Yeah, uh, what I'll use is the reference with the cemetery. Uh, we're, the program that we're going to have, that they're going to provide to us with, when it's completed, we will be able to continue it forward as we sell new lots, have new burials and so forth. Uh, so we would do the same thing with this. Uh, it would be something that the council clerk would be able to do and...
But it's like software, is what you're...
It is. It's a software package, correct.
Ondera?
I, I totally agree that this is a, a necessary expenditure for the city. Um, I just wonder if there are, obviously, I know absolutely nothing about this type of stuff. Not even really sure how to turn my computer on. Um, but is there another... But is there another, should we, should we, is there, is there another company that does this that we should get a quote from before moving forward? Or have you looked into that already, or?
Before we did the cemetery project, we had quoted two or three others.
Okay.
And this, GeoPro was the one we chose based upon their capability, their flexibility. They worked very well hand in hand with us. So that was the reason we chose them to begin with. We did not go back out and get new quotes for these, for this particular project. We used what we had for the cemetery project.
Let me see, okay.
I would be coming back to council. Council does not have it in their budget for this larger project, as this is a council project. So I would be coming back to council with an increase in council's budget to complete this project. But I think we all clearly support this. It's the right thing to do for the city of Jackson.
Other discussion?
Do we need to have this, in the form of a motion, or are you just going to bring it back for our consideration?
Well, what I would probably do is take this quote and have, just give it to Mr. Kirby and to Mr. Reed so that we could set up both things. One, to go into a contract with them to do it, and for Mr. Reed to appropriate the funds for it as well.
So no motion?
I just need a, maybe just a yea or nay, whether that's what council would like for, have brought forward in the upcoming meetings.
I mean, I move that we carry on with this project. It's very crazy to me that we don't know where everything is, so at least this will.
I support the project as well.
Put it all in one spot.
So we have motion and second to continue the project. I'll just ask for a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried unanimous. Other new business?
Can I ask a few questions? Try to make it brief. One thing was the paving on Veterans Drive and part of Harding Avenue already has got big cracks in it. So I know pavement's going to do that due to the weather and who knows what's underneath the road anyway. But the state does this a lot, where they'll seal the cracks in the pavement to try to make it last a little longer. That's been down for less than a year. And if you drive down Veterans Drive from Harding to the railroad tracks at Car Street, every section is cracked. There's a crack. That's what happened to the pavement to begin with, why it didn't last. Does the city have the means to seal that? And if not, I'm no contractor or anything, but I did a Google search and the melter is like twenty-five hundred dollars. That seems like a pretty small investment to help try to save some of the pavement. And at the railroad tracks, on Harding, between the railroad tracks, there's a huge crack across the center of that. Be fine this summer, but once winter comes, that's something that we need to protect our investment, I think. And I think probably everybody's sitting at the table for, you know, the cost and something like that. And I'm sure that it can all be done in-house. It's not like it needed, would need to be bid out. It's just one piece of equipment and some materials. But I would like to see that, something that we try to, try to baby and make last as long as we can. Those are the only two places that I noticed. I'm sure some of the other pavement due to road, you know, what's under the road bed, it's probably in other places. But I would like to see us try to protect our investment on that. That way, we're not constantly paving streets or fixing cracks and potholes. One other thing that kind of came up today, we had a visitors and convention meeting this morning. And we talked about how, you know, uptown looked and, and things like that. The city takes care of, I know you do, because I see you guys mow it, the overpass and the exits at ninety-three and thirty-two. Could we beautify that a little bit? I mean, that passes right through the center of Jackson. The guy with the radio today said, you know, fifteen thousand vehicles drive through there in a day's time. People who don't live here. But if you drive up, you know, up and down thirty-two, when you get closer to Cincinnati, some of the, some of the cities do have landscaping and signs and trees and it doesn't look like just a spot and road. It looks like, hey, this is a pretty nice place to live. We're mowing it anyway. Just a thought, we're about to have a tree commission meeting, next council meeting. So maybe if we could, we could do it all in-house, let's make that look nice out there. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Is other items on our new business for discussion? Onder.
Going back to the house number, just a thought I had. Wonder if that would be something that could be taken on as a service project with one of the entities within the community, the Boy Scouts, the Colossus Club? I don't know, just maybe as a, just as a service project that maybe they could go around and, and have numbers available to people. I don't know, just something to throw out there that possibly, you know, people that would like a nice, attractive set of house numbers, they're already up. It's the people that, you know, that don't, that probably, you know, maybe they would enjoy having somebody come in and say, you know, hey, we've got these numbers and, you know, the city is requesting that all houses be numbered and, I don't know, that's just a thought.
I guess my question I would ask Mr. Hinch is, when you encounter somebody who doesn't have one, and you ask them, maybe why they don't have their house number? What kind of responses do you get?
Well, it's been something that's been ongoing for a long time. In most of those instances, that it's become such an issue, we've now inquired up to this point. This is, when was this ordinance passed?
A year ago.
Okay. Not something that we've dealt with on the regular. It's extremely important. When we get a call and somebody says there's an emergency at forty-nine Vine Street, and you go through and you can't find forty-nine Vine Street with your spotlight at night, it slows the emergency response for both fire EMS and police. So it's extremely important to them. It doesn't, you know, this is all an advantage for the person that lives there.
Right.
I mean, if you can't stay in hiding really all that easily, you know, just by not having your numbers up, it just delays the response. It also delays the pizza delivery response, or the DoorDash, or whatever. So it's nothing but advantageous. I think what we really need to do is promote that that is passed and that that is important and why that's important. I think using the media, social media, is a campaign that we could take on for a while. I will make sure to instruct people that we're going to, if it's a house that we notice on a response, that we make sure to hand that to the property owner or make them aware of it and then try to do some follow-up. I think that's something we can probably take off the plate instead of have, Mr. Lewis, Ray Lewis is doing an excellent job with his code enforcement. We are in communication a lot. We try to be force multiplier for him. But that would be almost an overwhelming task for him to have to go door to door to deal with that when there are so many other issues that he's doing a good job taking care of. So I think on the case-by-case basis, when it comes up and when it's an issue, we can notify people, we can educate people. I don't think we want to get into hurrying up and going and citing a whole bunch of people for violation of that right now. I think we want the compliance for their safety. So that's the approach that I feel like we need to do with that.
And it was strange that Mr. Ondera would have brought that up, because when we first did this last year, we thought, gee, this would be a great idea for Boy Scouts or for school clubs and stuff like that to do as a fundraiser, because the community always gets behind those type of organizations. You know, pick out the, you know, numbers that meet the code and make an offer, you know, make a little bit on the side for the clubs, but also help us, help us residents as well. Makes, I feel good in more than one direction.
Mayor Evans?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. But I want to respond to Ryan's comments about the pavement a little bit. I don't want anyone to be misconstrued or confused. This pavement work we're doing is just the top inch and a half. We're not rebuilding roads. We paved about five miles of road last year. We, if we had tried to rebuild any of them roads, we would have maybe got a half a mile total. So, and most of our roads frankly don't have a very good base under them. And then we're paving over pavement that needed paved ten or twenty years ago. So I don't want anybody to even think that, once we repave a street, that it's good for, you know, twenty years. However, we do want to try to take better care of them once we've paved them. So I agree with you, we need to, if we don't have that equipment, acquire it and make sure each, each year, we, in the summer, we do a sealing program of our newer pavements too. Because not only are they on, you know, not very, not an adequate base in most cases, but asphalt to a certain extent is like, is like concrete and it's going to crack anyway. So, but if we try to properly maintain them, it will last longer. I've made the statement that we, that we hope to have everything repaved in the city of Jackson within ten years. That's going to require the income tax to be passed a second, you know, again. And if that happens, like we planned for it to, at ten years, we plan to start over, because it will need to be started over and done again. So this, this is an ongoing annual paving program that we're trying to get going. It's much needed, but it's not, it's not perfect. And, you know, it's, it's, it's not even feasible to think that we could rebuild these roads as a part of repaving the top surface. We're just replacing the surface. But it's still a big improvement and it is something that, you know, with the income tax, we can afford to do and we'll keep doing. So, that's all.
When the, when the state does the ninety-three project, they'll grind it, right?
They'll grind just the top about an inch and they'll put back about an inch and a half. And that's the same, the same philosophy we're doing. It's the same thing, it's exactly the same thing that Tolucah, City of Tolucah does, who we kind of copied our paving program after them. They're kind of the same thing. They pave every year and they plan to pave every year and in ten years they'll start over. And hopefully we're all still here enjoying that, that happening.
Anything else, new business? Mr. Crabtree?
I just have a question from my own curiosity. Is there any plans for the Eddie Jones Park? Is it on the radar at all? I know the park itself is kind of, is kind of rough. To me, hallmark sign of a, of a good town, great town, is a nice park area. Now, there's really not, if you don't belong to YMCA, there's really not the opportunity to get out and do something like play tennis or pickleball or something like that. I just wondered.
Okay.
We looked at the Eddie Jones Park. It's hard to invest a lot more funding down there because of the flood plain. It's, it's, the soil's unstable. It does flood multiple times a year. And, you know, it's one of those situations, how much more do you put into a situation that's not the best scenario down there? It is one of the few tennis courts that is around that the public can get to. But a lot of times it's not in decent enough shape, or it's got mud from the last flood on it. So I wish I had a better answer. It'd be nice if we had a better location, to be honest with you.
And like digging out the creek, isn't something that would really?
Yeah.
We, our situation where it comes from the creek, it's, it just gets it from everywhere, pretty much.
Yeah, that would really take the Army Corps of Engineers and a program to do that. We did put some funding in the budget this year to start saving, to have some of the brush and the trees and stuff removed, which happened several years ago and helped the situation. The amount of money we got this year is, set aside, isn't going to get much work done. If any, we'd be better off to add that much to it again next year and then be able to go out and maybe do a much nicer project in clearing some of that brush and trees out of the creek range. But to touch that would require really Army Corps of Engineers, EPA involvement. It's not something the city can take on.
Can I ask one question kind of related to that?
Sure.
Where the new T-ball field is on Mount Street and then that wooded area, does the city own all that area now? Like the, from Wood Avenue back around to where Mount Street School was and then behind where the T-ball field is on High Street now? So it's like the, they call it like the Wood Property, Wood Family or whatever.
Where the improvement was, what was it, back in nineteen or something like that, where they put the shelter house, is that the area you're referring to?
Yeah, that wooded area behind there where Mount Street dead ends there, does the city own that property?
That is, yes, that is still part of the city there by the creek.
Is there any plans to maybe like try to clean that up a little bit and try to maybe connect High Street to the park situation on both sides there? And then Mr. Newkirk will speak, that there are these gigantic mosquito pits that are, you can't see from the street where water sits all summer long and it's, it's, oh, it's just snakes and mosquitoes, I'm sure.
I think I've mentioned to David, if we could put a ditch in there and drain those, that also stops the mosquitoes. Plus, when the water does get up, it could go back in there and set until it goes down, then it can drain back out. Same thing on the one, on High Street. There's one in there that's got two beaver in it right now and they're starting to drop some trees. But if you go on the upper end of it, there's a small ditch there, but if you clean that out, it would drain that. It'd place the water back up into.
It doesn't, I mean, clearing some of the brush and stuff out, doesn't seem like it would be a huge undertaking. They did clear all that out once, probably fifteen years ago. But I don't, like unless you walk back in there, you don't see these things, but it, they're just, just a big mosquito swamp, basically. But I would like to maybe see if you all can, like he said, drain those out, because it's, you can't do anything at the park in the summertime over there on Mount Street unless you have a mosquito suit, so.
For consideration.
Consideration.
We have it. Anything else? Hearing none. Mr. Onder.
Mrs. Onder. I just briefly wanted to bring up, there's a young man in this town who deserves some credit, which is the Rutger Boyd. I know Pete did a piece in the paper here. I'm pretty sure you're all familiar with that situation, or maybe you're not. This, this young man lost his father a number of years ago to ALS. Suffered through it for a long, long time and this, this boy has been through a lot. And now he's ranked fifth nationally, he's on the high state gymnastics team. I just thought maybe that we could declare a Dylan Rutger Day in Jackson. Mr. Reed's pretty familiar with this family. This boy's dad worked for Brett for a number of years and, and it's just a, just a great, great family. I mean, there's three kids there, this was the youngest of the family and this boy probably took care of his dad for, you know, a long time. And I mean, this. for, you know, a long time, and I mean, this, it was very painful. So, I don't know, anybody have any thoughts about that?
He's still got, still got ties to Jackson? Her family here, or?
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah, matter of fact, his, his mother just, just, she sold a home on Gay Street and moved over to Church, she lives...
If you can get with me, we'll see what we can make happen.
Okay.
All right. I will say, it was a very good article in the paper, Pete, on him, enjoyable reading yesterday.
Great, great kid, great family.
Anything else? Hearing none, undertake a motion to adjourn? Mr. Peters, is there a second? Mr. Crabtree, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.